Could please call the roll. Trustee Anthony.
Present.
Trustee Foster.
Good evening.
Trustee Graham Hudak is absent. Director of立法的 clerk Seagrist is in attendance. Treasurer Slavens.
Good evening.
Trustee Snideman.
Hello, sorry.
And Supervisor Williams.
Hello, good evening. We've got one item on, oh, let's see. Call for a motion to approve the agenda, adoption of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
In favor of the motion as presented, state aye.
Aye.
We have one item on the agenda for the special study session this evening. It's Canton's 2019 Road Improvement Program. Director Foss is going to lead us through this. We've got a lot of material to cover. We're going to try to get it done in one hour period. We have a seven o'clock board meeting and we're going to try to hold to that. And then also, we will allow for everybody who would like to speak this evening to speak as well. So Director Foss, if you could lead us.
All right. So this is the much awaited breakdown of really what's been accomplished since the road millage was passed in August. So over the past four months, we've been working on a lot of things. And I kind of start with this photograph, which I think best captures what we're going to try to accomplish tonight. When we began preparing the materials for tonight's study session, we realized we have probably more materials than we can fit in the suitcase. So kind of like trying to stuff 80 pounds of clothes into your 50-pound luggage when you're going to head off on vacation. But we're going to try to limit it to the 50 pounds that has been imposed on us for tonight. And if you have any questions after the study session, certainly contact us and we'd be happy to answer those. So the very first thing that was done, I believe it was the day after the road millage passed, we established the internal working group. That group was, or the purpose or mission for that group is to lay out a 2019 Road Improvement Program that meets the goals outlined by the township board under the millage that was approved in August. Generally, what that means is lay out a program, which is what we committed to do when we had the public information sessions post presentation in April by the roads task force of their roughly kind of one year worth of work. That internal work group was made up of four individuals. Wendy Trumbull and myself as the co-chairs, so kind of finance and technical lead, and then Sarah Clay and Bill Surcheck, our technical backups, our technical resource people. In addition to kind of the four core members, we also had assistance from Kristen Kolb, our attorney, Kristen Thomas, kind of our public relations and marketing person, Deb Janis from the accounting side, although we haven't leaned too heavily on Deb yet, and then a number of consultants that are working on the projects for us. So just as a reminder, kind of to set the stage for what we're going to talk about tonight, we're going to talk about the three different categories or groups of road assets, the local county roads, the primary county roads, and the state roads. We're actually going to do it in reverse order. But if you recall, when the millage was, when the information on the millage, the sessions were being conducted, the board at that time had committed to allocating 30% over the term of 30 years, or 20 years, 30% of the funds to local roads, 55% to the primary roads, and 15% to the state roads. That third column shows you what that breakdown is. If you split the millage up, the 1.45 mils, and then the far right-hand side, the fourth column, shows you local county roads would get about 1.6 million per year, primary roads, kind of the major roads in the community, 3 million a year, and then the state roads, 826,000. There's a footnote there that indicates the state roads line excludes the 165,000-plus allocation that comes from the millage capture within the DDA or for the businesses within our downtown development authority along Ford Road. So when that money is added to the 826,000 in the state roads line, that comes out to a little over 991,000 a year for Ford Road. And we'll talk a little bit about that later. So for each group of those road assets, we're going to talk about what's been completed over the past four months roughly, and then what are some of the pending actions. And then near the end of the presentation, we'll talk a little bit about some of our thoughts on the future, in particular years 2020 through 2022 on the local road projects. Then we'll close it out with some information about a couple other items kind of on the calendar for the next few weeks. So on Ford Road, what we've completed since the first week of August is Canton was awarded a $750,000 grant from the state of Michigan. This was a budget appropriation that came through Representative Noble's office. The award was made to Canton for the purpose of commencing the design work on the Boulevard project along Ford Road so that we can figure out how much additional right-of-way, how much additional property is required to build the Boulevard. After we received notice of the receipt of that grant, the board approved what's called an LOU, a Letter of Understanding, with the Michigan Department of Transportation on use of that grant. In essence, the Letter of Understanding said that the state of Michigan could award that money to MDOT for the purposes that was intended when it was included in the state's budget. So while the money is technically coming to Canton, we really won't ever see it. It'll pass kind of mechanically from the state of Michigan to MDOT. However, from an accounting standpoint, we'll recognize the revenue coming in and the revenue going out to the, to MDOT. The other thing that's, or another thing that's been accomplished is Wendy and Sarah have set up the 2018, 2019, and 2020 budget structures for the Road Improvement Program, and the board has since adopted 18 and 19, and tentatively 20 as part of the budget presentation a few weeks ago. MDOT has developed and issued the formal request for proposals. This is the process by which it goes out and solicits engineering designers to actually do design work for the state, and this is for the Ford Road Boulevard project. So they asked for, in essence, teams of engineers to submit responses to that proposal, which would include kind of the qualifications or experience and ultimately eventually the cost for doing the design work. MDOT has actually received those proposals now. They were received just last week. And there are three teams that have submitted proposals on that, and I would expect that MDOT will share that information with us next week as soon as they physically get the information. Those proposals are submitted technically to the state, and then the state has software and a process that they use in order to screen the proposals to make sure that they meet at least the minimum requirement in those specifications before they hand them over to MDOT. So fair bet is underway already on the Ford Road Boulevard design, which is certainly excellent news. The other big thing that we've been working on most recently is developing the interagency agreement between the parties, and the parties being MDOT and Canton Township. We were about 90% there as of, I'd say, 3:00 this afternoon. We just, we're not quite ready to have the agreement before the board tonight, but we expect to try to get that agreement to the board within the next seven to 10 days for approval. So almost there. And I think as soon as MDOT's staff, the state attorney general's staff, and Canton's staff are comfortable with it, which will be shortly, we'll get that before the board. The other thing that we've done is we've met with the Wayne County Department of Public Services staff about the Hagerty Road portion of the Boulevard. As many of you know, this project does not involve just a Boulevard along Ford. There's a component of Boulevard roughly 900 feet north and south of Ford Road along Hagerty. That's necessary in order to make what we call kind of the choke point intersection along Ford Road work properly, and that's at Hagerty Road. So there's a small section of Boulevard required along there. Hagerty is a county road, so we needed to meet with Wayne County to start getting them on board with kind of their elements of this large project. We have also amended the 2018 budget, as I mentioned, to recognize that $750,000 grant from the state. And then last but not least, we went and toured a few local Boulevard projects to get a sense of what it could look like. We did that together with MDOT a number of weeks ago. We looked at two locations, what I'd call generally an older location in Livonia, along Newburg Road between Six and Seven Mile. They have a Boulevard section, similar width of road to what we have on Ford Road, but it's a little bit older design, but it gave us a sense of what that could potentially look like. And then we also looked at probably the newest section of Boulevard in southeast Michigan, and that is Orchard Lake Road between 14 Mile and Maple Road, which was just completed by the Oakland County Road Commission this year, actually. And that's also a narrow Boulevard cross-section, but it is actually a little bit wider than Ford Road at most locations. But gave us a good sense of scale and the types of things that are important along a Boulevard. So that's what's been completed. What's still pending as far as action items is approval of that interagency agreement. As I mentioned, I hope to have that, Wendy and I hope to have that before the board sometime, probably in the next seven to 10 days at the very latest. The engineering design firms, the teams that submitted to MDOT, there's going to be selection interviews the second week of January. Bill Surcheck, our engineering services manager and township engineer, will sit on that review or interview panel with MDOT to make that selection. MDOT will then very quickly award that contract. They've committed to us at this point that they would be able to make the commitment by late January pending selection the second week of January. So that's pretty tight for them, but we hope they'll continue to move this forward quickly. What that means is the engineering design would then commence in February, and then probably from that point forward for the next roughly five years, we would have monthly progress meetings. Sometimes meetings might step up and be more frequently, like every two weeks. Sometimes it may stretch out to six, but probably on average, monthly progress meetings during the design, right-of-way acquisition, and construction. And then the last kind of pending action that MDOT has agreed to with us is they will provide us with monthly cost data on the project so we know exactly how much is being expended, and that they will be good stewards of Canton's dollars as we provide those to MDOT. So that's kind of asset number one, the state projects, or the state project being Ford Road. The second group, again, working backwards, are the major county road projects. The way that we have identified major county road projects is as those roads including mile roads, half-mile roads, and the public industrial roads. So the mile roads are pretty clear, right? You know, these are roads like Warren and Cherry Hill and Geddes, and some of the, you know, major north-south mile roads. It's the half-mile roads that tend to be a little bit more confusing for some individuals. So think on the half-mile roads, Hanford, Salts, Lots. These are, these are some roads that, well, technically, the way that the county, the state, and the federal government would define those roads as being local roads, they're really major collector roads. They're roads that carry a lot of traffic. We've counted them into the major county road projects lists. And then public industrial roads, these are roads like Coppernick Road, Ronda Drive. They're county roads. They don't belong to any homeowner's group. They don't belong to anybody technically but the county, and then the businesses that are located along these roads, which also pay the road millage tax. The completed items on the, on the major road projects, kind of teeing this up for 2019 are, again, the account numbers have been set up for the, for the next three years, this and the next two years, I should say. Bill has developed and issued with finances assistance the request for proposal for the engineering design consultants. These are the designers that we would use to actually engineer the improvements on these major county roads, and that contract was awarded to Northwest Consultants of Canton on October the 9th, and they have done a tremendous amount of work since that time. We have also met with Wayne County Department of Public Services staff to coordinate the projects the county had planned for this upcoming year. That resulted in one small change, which I'll talk about in a second, to the list that we had originally proposed, a change for the good. The board approved an intergovernmental agreement, that's that acronym IGA, with Wayne County for an additional $388,000 back in October to help with the improvements on both Hanford Road and Salts Road. And then we have finalized the list of proposed projects together with our consultants and staff, using the list that was presented during the public information sessions, and the list that is on the back counter if anybody wants a copy before they leave. And if there ends up not being enough for tonight, just contact us and we can email you or mail you a copy of the projects. The map that's in the back of the room also has all the projects that are listed, very similar to what you saw if you attended any of the road information sessions. And the final list of projects, once approved by the board, will be posted on the township website. So this list, and it might be easiest to look at the big screen because the print's a little small on the LCDs on the side, but the big screen in behind the board lists the 15 projects that were on the list as of May. And this was the list that we handed out, the list that was on the website, the list that we've been discussing with the public all along. There were 15 projects on that list. There was a 16th line on the project list originally. That was just called other projects. I think it was about half a million dollars in funding that we had not actually identified projects for. We have since done that and incorporated it in our recommended list. The other thing about the original list, I purposely highlighted project number nine on here, which is Beck Road, north and south of Hanford Road. This was a project that we had planned to do, but we have decided after discussing with Wayne County that it won't be necessary, as the county had this project already on its plans for 2019, and will fund 100% of this, this, this project at Hanford Road. So we modified the list by deleting the one road, by deleting the one project on Beck Road. We also modified this list by combining two of the projects that were on Morton Taylor. We combined them into one project. They were, they're literally segments that are back-to-back, and that's the one that shows here as number 13, from Rygate to Warren. We originally had that split up as two projects because we weren't certain we were going to have enough money with $3 million allocated towards the major county roads. So if we had to drop a project off, we could kind of split that one up in a logical, logical point. Good news is, it looks like we're going to have enough money to do all that now. So it was combined into, into one line item, so we went from 15 projects on the original page down to 13. And then we added projects number 14 and 15 at the bottom of the list, which are Hanford Road, its entire paved length from Hagerty to Beck, and then Salts Road from Lily Road to Canton Center. These projects are projects that define, meet the definition of a major road, the way that we've defined it, and are subject to that $388,000 grant that we got from Wayne County. So this is kind of our recommended final project list. You know, we're officially kind of making it public tonight. We're asking for both the public and the board's comments on this list in advance of having the board formally adopt this list of projects at the December 11th board meeting. At that point, we would be in a position to release to the designers kind of the final, okay, let's finalize this and let's get our bid documents put together so we can, so we can move to the next step on the projects. So no bad news as far as the major county road projects go. That really came together nicely. As I mentioned, we hired Northwest Consultants Incorporated from Canton, they're a local design firm. They updated the estimate that we provided back in May, went through each one of these projects, and scoped it out in a fair bit of detail. And the good news is, it came back pretty much right at the, at the estimate that we had provided back in May. So the $3.7 million agrees with the 3 million that comes from the road millage, and then the 750,000 that comes from the county, which was promised under Executive CEO Warren's administration. So it leaves us a little bit of room still to utilize funds from the 2019 program to design the 2020 program. And the reason that that's important is if we want to be bidding at the ideal time, a little over a year from now, for the 2020 projects, we need to be doing design like in the fall, in September, October of this year at the latest, so that we can have bid documents ready, approvals by the county in place, coordination with the county, so that we stay on track and get the projects bid early in 2020 and construction started in April or May at the latest of 2020. We also are waiting on two other intergovernmental agreements with Wayne County. One is for the $750,000 that I mentioned, coming from the county executive's office, from the county budget. And the second, a second round of township road initiative funding. I mentioned the 388,000 that we got earlier. There's another, we estimate somewhere between 360 to 750,000 coming. And that would be, again, in the form of one of these intergovernmental agreements. I would anticipate those to happen very early in 2019 to keep us on track. Just in case it doesn't, Bill and I have already had, you know, lots of discussions about this and talked with our consultants. We will structure our bid documents in such a way that we have the ability to add or delete alternatives moving forward, so that it's not going to be a holdup to anything that we need to do to get the best possible pricing on the projects. Lastly, some of the pending actions on, on the major county road projects are as listed here. We expect to issue what we call our invitation to bid. That's a little bit different than a request for proposals. Bids are, you know exactly what you want, so you're going to go out and get it priced. And we're going to do that in, in February of 2019. The board would be considering a recommendation on award of construction in March of 2019. It's probable that we will bid these projects as a group of three projects. Some are asphalt, some are concrete, and some are preventative maintenance. And that's kind of how we're thinking right now, the logical breakdown would be. But Bill and his staff and the consultants will kind of sort all those details out over the next several weeks. Then construction would commence in late April as soon as the county and the state lift the frost laws off the roads, and it's safe to drive heavy equipment out there. And we'll be, we'll be putting up orange barrels, fast and furious around, around the community in, in the spring. The next, and although last, not certainly the least important item, we're going to need to meet with Wayne County Department of Public Services early again in, in 2019 so that we can start planning out the 2020 and 2021 projects. And we're hoping to get a commitment out of their senior administration, possibly through the executive's office, in the coming weeks to, to have that meeting. So last group of assets, these are the local county roads. I'll just remind everybody that during the millage information sessions, we indicated that in the first year, there would not be a match by the local homeowners associations or residents for the 2019 projects. The reasoning behind that was there just simply is not enough time to work out the mechanics of the match and get money and contracts and everything in place, and still get it designed, get it approved by the county, get it bid, and get the work underway in the spring of 2019. So in year one, we're foregoing the match, but proposing that the match come into play starting in year two, which would be 2020. So local county roads are being defined as pretty much every other road that is in a public platted subdivision. It does not include roads in site condominiums, and it does not include roads in apartment complexes, as I think everybody's aware. So some of the completed actions over the last four months is, again, we've set up all these account structures to help us with, with the funding and financing. Bill issued a second RFP for engineering design consultant on the local road projects. This RFP also included some overall, what we call program management consulting, to help us with managing this large effort of $5.5 million a year in, in construction each year. That work was awarded to a firm called Spalding De Decker and Associates of Rochester Hills. SDA is their acronym. That was awarded on October 23rd, and they too have been working vigorously since that time to put this, this program together. We've met with Wayne County DPS, I think Bill reminded me today, we've had three meetings with the DPS staff since we've rolled this out in order to coordinate with them. The other thing we did is we met with our consultant, with Spalding De Decker and Associates, to discuss the 19 program and also brainstorm some thoughts for 2020 to 2022, which I've got a slide on in a few minutes. The 2019 program within the neighborhoods is going to focus on, on these things. First and foremost, safety issues. So think of locations with severe settlement of concrete and asphalt. Think of areas in pedestrian crosswalks where there's substantial settlement that has maybe occurred, or substantial cracking or spalling of, of concrete, or degradation of the asphalt pavement. These are safety concerns, and they need to be given a priority within the neighborhoods. Secondly, we would look at, and these are not in any order of hierarchy but for really the first one. Safety is always, you know, foremost in, in looking at, at these issues. But secondly, looking at road drainage problems. I put a note here, some, not all. We're not going to be able to cure every drainage problem in every neighborhood in 2019, because there's a lot of drainage issues with the existing pavements within the neighborhoods. But we'll, we'll try and tackle, you know, as many as we can within the available 1.6 million of funding. Third, pavement repairs around catch basins and manholes that are located in the road. Again, some, not all. In this case, we're going to, our strategy is to focus on kind of the oldest local subdivision roads first. Those are the ones that generally probably need the highest priority attention when it comes to these catch basins. it comes to these catch basins and manholes. Next, we would perform some preventative maintenance treatments on the roads in the 20 neighborhoods that were recently repaired back in 2015 and 2016, under what was called the County Road Initiative Program, so that we continue to keep those pavements in good condition. So, that's, you know, investing to make sure that those repairs last as long as they possibly can. And then the second component is, we would then focus on some of the newest local subdivision roads that have been constructed in the township, again, with the idea to keep the good roads good, with preventative maintenance treatments. And these are things like crack sealing and joint sealing and kind of minor types of repairs, which keep the water from penetrating into the soils and base below the pavements and causing that degradation. The other thing, and again, this is a request both to the public and to the township board, is we would ask for your sore spots, your areas, these are, again, within the neighborhoods, your sore spots, where we have like long documented history of complaints. I think of Chloe Turbin, a resident in Canton, who's called me probably no less than 36 or 40 times about the road in front of her house. And, you know, we want to try to address a number of these sore spots as soon as we can. And then the final point that I'll make about the 2019 local residential projects is, we would generally avoid, to the extent possible, doing work coincidental with our sidewalk repair program. That is a program that is already quite disruptive to the neighborhoods. And when we made this pledge and this pitch to the township board back in April and May post-road task force presentation, I said several times that our commitment was to not make it too painful for the residents motoring, you know, around their neighborhoods and on the major county roads. So, we're trying to coordinate this in a way to not make it too overly disruptive. Zone four is what I call central middle Canton. Think of kind of Cherry Hill, South Togeties, think kind of Haggerty to Sheldon. That block is roughly zone four. If you want to see exactly the map, you can talk with Bill. He can provide a detailed map of what zone four looks like. Not tonight, but after the meeting. Some of the pending actions on the local county road projects then would be a list of projects on the local side. We're not going to be able to get those as quickly to you. We won't have those for December the 11th, because they're still in development. Understand, we just brought Spalding De Decker on board October 23rd. They've been on board about a month. They've done a tremendous amount of work in that month, but we're not quite ready to give you a list of projects of where we think we should be working. But they're working hard on it, as Bill mentioned to me today. They're already scoping out areas, coming up with some estimates for us. So, I'm confident that by January 22nd, for sure, we can give that local county road projects list to the township board. So, any input you have on that between now and then would be most welcome. Engineering design will be completed in February. We anticipate getting the other, one of the other IGAs, intergovernmental agreements with Wayne County, who committed to provide an additional $400,000 in addition to our 1.6 million of funds for local roads. So, that would give us an overall $2 million program next year. That'll help considerably. So, hoping to get that intergovernmental agreement executed as early as possible in 2019. We'll have to get the Wayne County Design Engineers' final review in February, get our invitation to bid out in February, board approval in March concurrent with the board approval for the major roads program, and then construction to start concurrent with the major roads program in April as soon as the frost laws are lifted off the roads. So, those are our kind of three major categories. This is just a little bit of brainstorming that the engineering team did on the 2020 to 2022 local county road projects. Again, for your thought, for your consideration. Our proposal would be to, in early 2019, a date, kind of a date and date to be determined still, we put out a request to homeowner associations and groups of residents to submit letters of interest to us, committing to the match program for one of three different sized projects over the three-year period of 2020 to 2022. Our thoughts would be that we kind of develop a standard form for them to use, and then they submit those back to us. Because where we're sitting today, I think we've been contacted by three or four homeowner's associations with pretty serious inquiries, pretty serious interest in being part of the program in 2020. And, but we really don't know. Is there going to be three or four going into 2020, or are we going to have 134? So, we need to get a handle on how many homeowner's associations and residents are interested. And we thought the best way would be to prepare some kind of a letter of interest with some basic information. That'll help us build an inventory of projects that we anticipate could be done over that roughly three-year window, and then help us design it. We would also possibly bond sometime in that window, that is, issue debt in order to, what we call, do more faster. So, Wendy had ran some analyses several months back on if we bonded in four or five-year blocks throughout the duration of this 20-year millage. And we did more projects, for example, in year one and two of the first five-year block, and then did less projects in year three, four, and five, but still spent the same amount of money. How much improvement could we see in the pavement condition index, in the PESER rating that we've talked about before? And the consultants ran those analyses out based on these kind of four- to five-year blocks of bonding, and it does drive the pavement condition index up higher. And that's really the end goal here. So, while we have not made any commitment to bond, we haven't talked with bond council, formally anyways, we haven't talked with the board about this in any great level of detail. Again, something to consider for the future going into 19, before we do the 2020 to 2022 program. The next thing that we would do is assemble a meeting of those that make the pre-commitment, probably do that in later spring of 2019, to start talking through what that program might look like. By then, we'll know, you know, is it three or four, or is it 134? And then we can have a better discussion with individuals on when we could probably do their program. How would we do it? Would we structure things geographically, as I put in this next bullet? You know, does it make sense to cluster projects to get an economy of scale, so that the contractor's not driving all over the entire 36 square miles of the township to do projects, and maybe just focusing on certain areas? But also with the mindset that we don't want to do too much in one particular area and make it too disruptive. So, getting that letter of interest out there and gauging the interest will help us make some of those recommendations to the board. And then the last thing that we had as far as thoughts is that we would propose entering into contracts similar to what we did in 2015 and 2016 with the County Road Initiative Program, for those homeowner's associations and groups that are willing to make the pre-commitment. Couple of the last couple of slides, and then we can open it up to questions from the public and questions from the board. We intend to roll our internal work group of four, plus the kind of ad hoc members, into an expanded group in early 2019. That expanded group will include two full-time electeds, one part-time trustee, the supervisor, clerk, and then one trustee, I think at this point, it's trustee Foster. And then include three residents on the committee as well, or the group. And that would be Jim Castillo, who led the Roads Task Force work in 2017 primarily, into early 2018. Former supervisor and state rep, Phil Ojoy, who has a good background, good knowledge of not just township government, but roads. That was a big part of his role, and he was a state legislator. And then resident Mike Androw, who would also help, who participated with the Roads Task Force, and I think would be a good add to this expanded group. The existing four members would continue with the work group, because there's going to be, there's a lot of administrative and technical things that need to be sorted out with this program, especially in the first couple of years. Wendy and I have had a discussion early on that we hope to transition this work group down to maybe eventually, like Sarah and Bill, being kind of the two internal reps, and that would certainly be our long-term goal as things evolve over the next 12 months. We also wanted to just note that one of the recommendations from the Roads Task Force was to create such a group, and by the creation of this expanded group, we feel that it would meet that recommendation number four of the Roads Task Force report from April. Lastly, a reminder on the December 18th study session. This too was a recommendation from the Roads Task Force in April. And that was a request to have a dialogue or explore further the differences between the current township form of government that we have here in Canton and the city form of government. Through Supervisor Williams and our attorney, we have been working with the Michigan Townships Association and the Michigan Municipal League, which generally represents cities, over the past couple of months, to put together presentations on December the 18th. So, fundamentally, Michigan Municipal League is going to make the presentation. MTA, the Michigan Townships Association, individual is going to be there to kind of question, maybe kind of counteract or add to what's being presented from the Michigan Municipal League's attorney. And then, that will focus really on what the difference is with being a city versus a township. Then Kristin Kulp, our general counsel, will talk about the process to become a city, should any of the citizens desire to do that. And then lastly, Wendy and I will talk about some of the financial implications, revenues, and in particular, or specifically, the Public Act 51, which is the road fund, the money that's raised through the state fuel taxes and state vehicle registrations and license fees, and the costs associated with performing road services if Canton was to become a city. So, that is going to start at 6:00 PM on December the 18th here in this room. And then finally, this would then meet recommendation number six of the Roads Task Force, which I believe pretty much checks off every one of the recommendations that the task force made back in April, at least in some way, shape, or form, has satisfied that. So, with that, I guess I'd first ask Wendy if she's got anything to add? Okay. Bill, Wendy, Sarah, Deb, there's others, Mark, are here to answer any questions, and we'd be happy to take those.
What I'd like to do, if we may, is kind of go through public comment at this point, because we have another 18 minutes. We knew this would be almost impossible to get done in hours, so we'll do the best we can. Is there anybody in attendance tonight that would like to make public comment? Just by a show of hands, is anybody interested in making public comment? On these issues specifically, yes. Yeah, we're asking questions, yeah. And the, all right. So, what we're going to do is, we'll start in the back of the room, and then just kind of work way forward. So, if you would, please come to the podium over here. And we ask that you tell us your name and address, and then limit your comments or the conversation to three minutes. And with that, this off.
Cindy, I end up 43618 Amber Court. I just have a general question. We're part of the association, and our roads are a mess. But we don't bother you on a regular basis, but we do bother Wayne County regularly. So, is that being taken into consideration? Is Wayne County going to recommend, or?
I highly recommend the HOAs communicate, not only with Wayne County on a very regular basis, but also with Canton Township, because if you've got significant projects to be done, we want to get you in the work queue.
Add, so I didn't know if they would also funnel information. Okay.
Please also communicate with the township, and then we'll put the two pieces together.
We definitely want to make sure that the county still is aware of all the maintenance requests, because they are ultimately responsible for road maintenance still.
Working across the back row, George?
I don't know, I don't see Sheldon Road on here. It may come later. I don't see Gettys Road on here. It may come later. Each and every pore on concrete, since I've worked with this all my life, I would like a slump test in the strength of the concrete and see if there's road mat being replaced and rebar in it. So, it doesn't go up and down and crack. Rebar keeps it from going up and down. Wayne County, years ago, on a lot of these subdivisions, they were poured, just on, Forest Brook was poured just on the clay dirt, and that's why it's up and down all over the place, the roads. The county allowed that. Next thing is, it'll probably come in 30 years down the road. And I've talked to developers out here, small ones, where they would do 25 houses. I'd like to know why Polk and some of these big outfits are coming in here in these subdivisions and putting asphalt roads down, when in the past, it's been concrete. Concrete will last longer than an asphalt road, naturally. And that's, like I said, I'd like to know, from Sheldon Road, are they going to, for the next year or so, are they going to repair from Van Born to Ford Road? It's in bad shape, down by Van Born Road and the railroad tracks there. And Lily Road's in terrible shape. Canton Center Road over here, from Ford Road going over to Plymouth is in terrible shape. I bet you that road's not 10 or 15 years old. In fact, some of it was repaired in the last year or two.
Thank you, George, for your comments, and I'll extend the question again. For subdivision, asphalt versus concrete, who makes that decision, and how is that decision made?
The developer, the developer has the option to use either. Specifications are allowable for both, by both Wayne County and by Canton Township.
Thank you. All right, moving up the second row from the back, sir, would you like to speak? And then anybody else in the second row from the back that would like to speak? Maybe we could start forming a line, so we can move through this pretty quick, a little bit quicker.
Hi, Kirk Cleveland from 291 Savannah Drive. I have a question on the brainstorming slide. You mentioned that there'd be letters of interest, and then homeowners would have to pre-commit to that. How do we know what would be the cost we'd be pre-committing to? Is there already a PESER rating that would say what our subdivision is, you know, what needs to be fixed at our subdivision? Because we originally had a special assessment district done at our subdivision Savannah Point last year in October, and there was a PESER rating and an estimated cost. Is that study still valid for what the cost would be, or has there been additional studies been done to the roads of what Canton Township thinks that it needs to be done?
Yeah, so there has not been any additional studies, per se, done. The consultant that we have is out looking at the neighborhoods. I'm not sure if he's been in, or they've been in Savannah Point yet. But your, you know, I would anticipate your study is probably still quite valid. It would be of use by our consultants. If you could provide it to Bill, that would be awesome. But the PESER, that PESER rating was just updated last year. That was an effort that the township did.
So, if we would agree to it, we would understand in this letter of interest of what our cost of the road would be beforehand, before going out to getting the pre-commit from our residents?
Yeah, so the way we're breaking the pre-commitment down is into three different projects. If you look at that first bullet, there's three sizes of projects. There's a small project, which is $0 to $50,000 in total value. The residents in that case are required to match that by 5%. So, it's 95% millage money, 5% local match. That's intended for generally kind of smaller projects. Mid-sized projects are 50 to 100,000. There's a 10% match on that one by the residents. And then the larger projects are up to 200,000, and those are 20% match. So, on a $200,000 project, then you would be required to put 40,000 in, to get a $200,000 project.
I thought it was around 500,000 to fix the roads.
Oh, conceivably, you know, maybe you could do something over a two-year period, or do a year, skip a year, do another year, that sort of thing. Or if you wanted to commit more money from your own coffers, if you had it available, you know, we could possibly lump it in to do a slightly bigger project. That's how we handled it with the County Road Improvement Program in 2015 and 2016, for those associations that did have some sizable money set aside for roads. But I would talk with Bill. He's the guy right at the end of the aisle here. He's our engineering services manager and township engineer, and he can help you coordinate on that going into the new year.
Bill, do you have any business cards with you tonight?
I do.
Okay. Okay, maybe, Bill, if you put a couple of business cards out back, so people could email, call you if they needed to. All right, so third row from the back, moving up, please, sir.
I'm Tim Hoffman, 45215 Danbury Road in Glengarry Village. I'm glad you brought up, I guess my only, I guess, request would be to maybe consider, we, especially in the subs that have ASR, the $200,000 limit is a drop in the bucket in an ASR sub. Our estimate from like a year and a half ago for Glengarry One... Our estimate from like a year and a half ago for Glengarry One, which was only portions of Glengarry One, mostly Danbury Road, was like a million dollars. So, you know, I don't know how you could do, it seems like it'd be very disruptive to do $200,000 projects in a, you know, you'd want to come in, I think, and just do it. So I think that'd be something for you guys to think about, especially like Glengarry Village One. I know in Sunflower off of Hanford, ASR is rampant in there as well. You might want to think about some way to handle, like, there's a few mega projects, I think, out there that you're going to have to think through, because I can't see how you could do it in $200,000 increments. Okay? And then the pre-commit thing, are you saying, I guess my question is yours, you said something about mid-2019, is that the assumption is the sub, or a portion of the sub, I guess, would, they'd have the 20% match ready to go?
I think, you know, our thinking at this time is that you would have that money ready for us by around the end of the year, the beginning of 2020, so that we know you're in?
Yep.
So that we can, you know, make sure that we've got things finalized when we go out to bid in, say, January of 2020.
And one last question, I'll get off, is if you have a sub like Glengarry Village One, we have one road that's an ASR road, Danbury, and is there, is there any thought of, like, do you have to do a whole sub to get the match, or can you do like a frontage base proposal, something to think about? You know, not, nothing can be solved today, but I just think we need to think about the ASR subs, because they're going to be big projects. Okay?
I think you've given a lot of thought to kind of how the mechanics of this might work. It would be really good to probably talk directly with Bill.
Yeah, we've talked a bit. I just wanted to mention the ASR subs. We have a few big ones. Thanks. I don't know how this, Bill can tell you what ASR is.
ASR is a, is a...
I gotta go to the mic, Bill.
Bill.
Bill, you gotta go to the mic.
ASR, the alkali silica reaction, is a, is a type of a concrete disease that you'll see in many, in many pavements from the, generally from the 80s and 90s. The nearest one that we probably all saw many times was Glengarry Boulevard on the east side of Canton Center. It was actually fixed under the county program in 2016. It generally looks like it's flaking off the top. If you go to Beck Road, south of Warren Road, and go into Sunflower, Bob, I believe that's Sunflower Eight, it's immediately off Beck Road, that is ASR. You'll know it when you see it. It's a, generally from the 80s and 90s, you see this pavement. And the only fix truly is to remove and replace the entire pavement.
So complete disintegration of the concrete. Something like going back to dirt, concrete, just going back to the same...
Okay, sir in the cab, would you like to speak? Okay, all right, so, yes, please. I'm losing track of rows. It looks like fourth row up.
Four, get to talk to you.
Oh, yeah. Public comment first.
Hi, my name is Jim Aaron. I live at 2178 Fairway Circle. And I'm looking at the major road improvements. I don't see Hagerty on here at all. And Hagerty Road, south of Cherry Hill, for about a block, is just horrible. It's just horrible. I drive that road almost every day. The intersection of Lilly and Palmer, you know, last year, a contractor came in there and dug a big hole in the middle of the intersection, and did a haphazard patch of it, and it's just horrible. That whole section of Palmer, from, you know, from Lilly, a little bit to the west, is just terrible. I mean, a little bit to the east. That's all, that was my, oh, yeah, one other thing. Hagerty Road, where the subdivision Canterbury Muse, they have a sign that says Water Over Road, it's been there for about six months. And I've called a couple of times about it. I've never seen anything change. Today, I did see a Canton truck there, and a couple of people in the truck, I don't know what they were going to do. But this, this flood on the side of the road has been there for six months. And jeez, I mean, come on, Canton can do better than that, can't they? I know it's probably a county problem, but you know, you're not probably going to get anything fixed by the county. So, you know, if someone could take care of that flood, you know, it's just...
Okay, fourth row up. Yes, please.
Hi, Kathy Russell, 2534 Woodmont Drive East, River Park subdivision. You answered a question about the resident matching. What happens if a subdivision doesn't have those funds to match? You know?
Let me put it this way, as bluntly and as politely and tactfully as I can, those organizations, those subdivisions that are organized will probably have their roads taken care of first. This is a 20-year program, and it's not, nothing's overnight, right? There's a long-term thing we're looking at, and some neighborhoods, I think, will never have the capacity to come up with a match. So we're going to have to be creative in the out years. But upfront, it's going to be those who are organized that'll probably be taken care of first.
We've paid for the assessment two years ago, and, and they've identified that our streets are, what, the scale is one to four, ours are a four, meaning the worst.
I think you've got the ASR condition that...
Yeah, and, you know, so we've done this, but, yeah. So basically, we just watch our homeowners leave Canton, because they're, they don't want to be there. Because safety issues, when chunks of concrete that are this size are being thrown up as a car drives down the street and hits a kid, you know, how many kids have to get hurt or cars get damaged? But again, all of these projects, you don't see neighborhoods on there.
Right. So this, this particular list, just so we're clear, these are just the major county road projects purposely. That list of local projects is something that probably come January 22nd, so definitely stay tuned to that. And then, just so you're aware, another, we floated, you know, I showed the 80-pound suitcase at the beginning, we floated another 30 pounds of ideas that may or may not be kind of embedded in this presentation. One of the, one of the things we have talked about is, you know, what does the future look like, you know, beyond a few years out? Will the individual neighborhoods still have the capacity to match? Will there be a match program? Will we maybe consider right out of the gate, a perpetual program where there is some component of the 1.6 million each year that's maybe not matched? These are all things that are kind of on the table that we're throwing around with our program consultant. They're doing the evaluation of the neighborhoods right now. It'll be kind of January before we really have any sound recommendations on the locals.
There, would you like to speak? Okay. I don't know if it's premature, a little bit early. Would you like to say hi, introduce yourself as incoming commissioner, Wayne County Commissioner Dobbs? Not yet. When, when do you get sworn in? You could tell us when you get to the, the mic.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Melissa Dobbs. I am the Wayne County Commissioner-elect for District 10, which is Plymouth and Canton. So I'm just here to introduce myself tonight. I am a resident of Canton. I grew up here, longtime resident, and, you know, I'm here to be the liaison for the county for this project. And one thing I, I kind of wanted to add to this is that some people have mentioned that some of these roads are not on the list. I think that there, there is a system of picking out which roads came in first. So this is only, you know, the first year of the 20-year project. So maybe in 2020, we'll see Sheldon on the list, hopefully, and Hagerty. So, you know, we have to be patient, and it's not all going to happen overnight. Thank you, everyone.
Definitely, one thing that we can, we can have you advocate for the community on is that the commitment that the county made to us, which was not to reduce the major projects that it has planned in Canton over the next 20 years. And, you know, it's not on our list, but it's on the map at the back of the room. Cherry Hill Road project, which is, I think, five to six million dollar job, is, is underdesigned by Wayne County right now. It's technically a 2019 project. Given the design is a little bit behind schedule, it's more likely going to be a start construction in later 2019, finish in 2020. But it goes all the way from Canton Center to Hagerty. And then, as Mr. Aaron had noted, the section of Hagerty, south of Cherry Hill, is in horrible condition. That is going to be part of the county's project, so that's why it's not on our list. Otherwise, this list kind of represents a longstanding list of sore spots that, that we've collected over the years, and some of the worst conditions in Canton Township.
Welcome aboard, and ease yourself into it, because you're in for a rough ride. But you'll, I think she'll be, you'll be fine. Bob?
My name's Bob Parker, 6806 Weathersfield. One, I want to say Sunflower is in their letter of intent, will be there. But I want to throw a curveball at everybody. When I look at Ford Road right now, the Boulevard is planned to Sheldon. And we have seen growth from Sheldon to Canton Center. And if we're five, 10 years down the road, I can see it going further. So I guess my, my concern was, are we going to expand it at least to Canton Center?
Yeah, so we've, we already had that discussion. That's in our 80-pound suitcase. We've had that discussion with MDOT, because the reality is, is there is, you know, we have seen increased number of accidents at Canton Center and Ford now, since the study was done in 2014 for the Boulevard. The complexity is, that study is really the driving force behind the limits of the current project. So if we wanted to expand the limits of the project to what I'd call west of Pizza Hut, which is really where the Boulevard would end, it's kind of midway between Sheldon and Canton Center, that study would have to be redone. That's going to add another year of time, a lot of additional cost. We feel that the best strategy right now is to design the Boulevard as was originally intended, with the expectation that there could be a future phase west of there that would go probably beyond where Bell Tire is currently.
Yeah, I was just, you know, as we looked at, I could see in future, we'd have to do something additional. That's all that. Thanks.
Yeah. Would you like to speak, sir? Would you like to speak? Yes. Okay.
Ari Otuski, 47596 10-point drive, Canton. Hope everyone had a good Thanksgiving. And, you know, I could say a lot of things, but I don't have the time. But I want to say that it's amazing, the last six months, how Canton has seen an rush of road repair. And it's scattered. I notice it after you drive on it. And another thing is, Beck Road, from Warren to Ford, needs dire repair. I don't care what you guys say, it needs dire repair. And since that new church is at the corner of Warren and Beck, that asphalt is being, you know, redone all in there. Especially if Hanford, Warren finally got done, you know, they're currently still working on it, between Canton Center and Beck. The traffic signal right there at Beck and Ford Road is a disaster. Ever since they put that third light on, the turning lane on one way, created more issues. That Godwell got wiped out three times. And asphalt, you know, asphalt's been put in some divisions in Canton for many years. You know, it's the cost between concrete, the asphalt, it still goes to the base, your foundation. You don't got no foundation, you got nothing. And cost probably is lower than with asphalt, but it's easier to repair, it's easier to maintain. I have concrete in Fox Run, but there's a lot of subs right there at Ridge and Warren that's got asphalt. They got cement curbs, some don't have curbs. Other than that, you guys have a good evening. I'm done.
Okay, we're about six minutes past where we wanted to be, but that's okay. Now would be time for board questions and comments, please. Emery, we'll work our way down.
Great. Thanks for the presentation, and thanks to everyone for coming. A couple of things. So it might be a good thought to, since you've kind of had a brainstorming session of letters of understanding with the homeowners association, maybe having a kickoff meeting, inviting the homeowner association presidents to come in and say, hey, this is our process, fill this out, you know? And another thing is, there are some, as we know, neighborhoods that don't have homeowner association, so maybe invite those residents. And this young lady who spoke, I believe that if there's a section of road that doesn't belong to a homeowners association, those particular neighbors can get together and raise the funds for that section of road if needed, so it's not only, you know, only two HOAs. So I don't think all people know that. Some of the people who don't live in HOA think that they were excluded. And also, so in the subdivisions, are you recommending concrete or asphalt? I know major roads, but with subdivisions...
Did you want to answer that, Bill?
Most of the repairs, we're going to be working with existing pavement. So if it's a concrete subdivision, we'll be doing panel replacements, or perhaps full replacement from curb to curb. If it's an asphalt sub, we'll be milling and then replacing with asphalt. So we won't contemplate right now any changes from concrete to asphalt. That's a huge undertaking. I did just talk to Bob about that, and we've contemplated that in the past. But if it's an asphalt section of six or seven inches, and we're taking off three inches, we're putting three inches of asphalt back. And for concrete, you're generally taking out the entire panel all the way down, and then putting concrete back in, so you really can't mix and match.
Um, one more thing is, so the contractor digs, I mean, the contractors are still responsible to go back and fill in those holes, like at Lilly and Palmer, and then there's one at Beck Road also, correct? I mean, they're, we're still going to hold them to that? Because they just, just fixed Lilly and Palmer probably about a month ago, and I don't know if it's... And then there's also one on Beck Road that they cut across the road. So that's not part of this program, but we're still going to, they're still held to.
They are. Yeah, the, the county ultimately is responsible for that. There's ones like at Lilly, that Mr. Aaron brought up, Lilly and Palmer, that was a repair by DTE. But the county generally follows up with DTE regarding making those repairs. But we also flag them. We know that, you know, who's making these cuts in the road, and we'll follow up with Wayne County as well.
All right, thank you.
John?
Well, the contractors have, we have a warranty on the road repairs.
You want to take that one, Bill? You've been doing some of the research on warranties.
So, most road agencies in the state, we defer to MDOT for all, for all guidance on design and things like that. MDOT does have a policy on warranties. They will warranty a project if it is $2 million or more, and if it is a new project. So if you're building a new road, you can ask for a warranty. What happens in practice is, if you're doing a repair, you're not going to be able to get a warranty out of a contractor. He's going to be repairing a portion of a road that he did not build. If you try to place a warranty requirement on that type of a contract, where you say you're taking out several inches and building back up, we run the risk of having no bids, or having wildly high bids. And in practice, and we've talked amongst our consultants, plus we, plus projects we've done, when you have a warranty for a, a full project, even if it's a brand-new road, you're still going to run into issues of working with the surety to prove that the contractor either did not build it correctly, or the materials were wrong. So what we have focused on, and what we will do on this project, on these projects, is to test the materials as they go in, have enough of a contingency to be able to fix things that we uncover when we find them and we dig things up, and to test and inspect the materials. We're really not contemplating any type of warranty right now. It will drive our bids either to no bids, or very, very high bids, and getting into that situation where you're trying to recover costs, because you're saying, you're, you're making a claim that the project, or the, the product that you've put in is not, is inadequate.
We'll be selecting the contractors as well as doing the inspection. We will do that.
We will be doing that. Correct. Correct. So...
Mr. Surcek, perhaps you might want to stay out there.
Nope.
Just real quick, do you know the cost, when Warren Road is done, the mile stretch between Beck and, and Canton Center, what the total cost will be for the project?
I, I don't know that off the top of my head. They did add that piece on Beck Road, north and south, so I don't, I don't, I don't want to speculate. I know it was, it was over a million, I think, for that whole project.
Over, over a million?
Yeah, it included the... Yeah, it included the improvements to the intersection at the school also, so they...
Is it safe to say, because I've heard the adage in roads, that when you're working with asphalt, it's about a million a mile when you're, when you're doing projects like that?
Per lane mile on a new road, but this was actually a mill and, mill and replace, a little, little lower, and they did the full mile.
And I believe the...
And driveway repairs, yeah, good point, Bob.
Concrete portion of Canton Center, which is between, I believe, Geddes and Beck Road, which is obviously not a complete mile, how, do you know what the total cost of that project was?
Oh, the piece that was done about seven or eight years ago in front of this building?
Last year. Last year's project.
Oh, oh, the reconstruction, yeah. That was, I believe, over two.
Over two?
Yeah, over two million. It was a full five-lane reconstruct in sections, so significant progress.
Just under a half-mile portion?
Yeah.
Yeah, because when I hear, I mean, I hear a lot in the community, and people talk about what projects are on, what projects aren't on, I know one of the things we had talked about was making sure we still got federal funds into Canton Township and county projects into Canton Township, and so when you see something like maybe a three or a four-mile stretch of Sheldon Road that should need some pretty major reconstruction, and you look at a price tag of over probably $5 million, you might not want to use a $3 million a year road millage and lock up actually substantially more than 100% of your funds. You know, the goal was to try to spend that money around the township, if I'm not mistaken, so...
And we're also gonna be taking careful as we move year by year to ensure that the county is still pushing federal aid projects forward and their routine maintenance projects that they do each year.
So for larger projects like Sheldon, or maybe that portion of Hagerty, would those be candidates for the, for our Rose Millage, or would those be candidates for federal?
What we're gonna do is, we're gonna look out on the federal aid list, there's a large project list of all the roads in the county, we want to look out and see if there's any federal aid projects that could bubble up in the next five, six, seven, eight years, and we don't really want to touch those. We want to make sure those come to us through federal aid in the normal process, like the Warren Road job, that was a federal aid project. So, yes, we're gonna be monitoring the county very closely on, on making sure we still get our normal allotment of federal aid projects.
I also, I noticed I didn't see any budget for coal patch, how much of a coal patch are we buying with the road millage money that's gonna be spent on potholes?
We're not gonna be doing any routine maintenance, nor are we gonna be doing any salting or winter maintenance for this program.
Let me pile on what Michael just said, and guys, there's no, we're not fixing potholes with any of this millage money. You still gotta ride Wayne County hard on every issue you have and you want corrected, don't stop putting in the tickets, and if you don't know how to submit tickets, please send me an email, and I submitted three or four last week, okay, myself. If I get a phone call, I'll submit them, you know, if somebody's not computer savvy, but it takes about 20 seconds. The other thing is, could you ask somebody on your team, Bill, to put this presentation into a Gantt chart for timing from the three major, you know, the major...
A schedule for this, yeah.
Yeah, just put, convert the words into a Gantt chart, a little bit easier.
Yep.
Then, welcome aboard, Commissioner-elect up. The, right off the bat, the IGAs that we've been waiting for, for a couple of months, that'll be an area where we would look to you for some assistance in addition to the individual tickets, so, thank you.
I just want to piggyback on what Trustee Hudek had said on the local projects, and I don't know if we could put something, if you haven't already, on the website just about the letter of interest and maybe the three, just to help guide homeowners and subdivisions about when the letters would be recommended.
Yeah, that would be our plan, I think, you know, probably be doing that around the end of January, so that will have our recommendations on the 2019 local projects coming to the board at the same time, maybe with a draft of that letter, and we can get that up on the website right away.
And the other question, and you may have, and I just didn't hear you, for 2019, the projects that you're gonna be doing, do you have a list, or are you working on a list, or are you waiting to, how, how is that gonna work?
So these are the, this is the list of major roads?
Yeah, but for the local projects, you were talking about safety being one, road drainage.
That'll come, that'll come January 22nd is what we're targeting, that'll be the local project roads.
Okay, okay.
Spalding De Deckers, like Bill told me earlier, they've been out all week long working on collecting data out in the field, so they can come up with some recommendations to us.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, great presentation, looking forward to it, approving a lot of projects in March, it looks like. Couple of questions on Ford Road, I think you alluded to this, so the, some of the work that they did, what was it, six years ago or whatever, on the Boulevard, that they can keep, but now they have to build and do more detailed design on it, is that correct?
Yeah, so what was it, completed in 2014, was what's called a traffic and environmental study? It's a conceptual design, really, gives you an idea of what the Boulevard might look like, you know, from a, from a general conceptual design standpoint. Now, they have to do detailed design, what the engineers will do early on, probably starting in March, weather permitting, go out and collect, go out and collect survey, so there'll be surveyors out along Ford Road, they'll be pulling all the drawings for all the projects that ever been done along Ford Road, utility-wise and road-wise, to begin building that kind of layered cake of information that you see on a road project, so that, those will be some of the early tasks.
Thank you. In terms of Ford Road and funding, has MDOT, or the state, or whatever, fully approved doing this project over the next five years, funding-wise?
Well, the, so there's a lot of steps involved in it, right? The first step is to get the project added to what's called the Transportation Improvement Program and the Long Range Plan, and as Pat knows, that information is in process, and MDOT is going through the steps in order to get that added by January. So we saw that information just this week. The fact that they've issued an RFP, the interviews are scheduled, we're 90% there with the agreement, you know, it was close, I thought we were gonna have it today, but, you know, we're 90% there. The agreement's gonna be before the board in the next week. That agreement will be executed according to what MDOT wants to achieve about a week after we approve it, under the existing MDOT director, the existing governor, and existing Attorney General. So I would expect that we'll be in a position before Christmas to hopefully deliver some good news, that we have a contract that sets out all the financial obligations and everything else associated with the project, and that we are gonna be selecting that designer in January and be actually physically seeing work starting on the engineering side in February.
And I'm sorry, is everything that you're discussing now concerned with just engineering, or committing to the full project?
This is the full, yeah, this is the full, you know, whatever it ends up being, if it's, you know, 45 million or $50 million project, our share of that, and then MDOT's share of that.
Full enchilada, and just, yeah, to add to that, is, board, please expect a phone call from Amy the afternoon, morning that we get, the IGA, and from MDOT, and Wendy and Tim are comfortable and have scrubbed it, and they're ready to move forward. We're gonna have a special, special meeting, that's gonna be one agenda item, which is gonna be coming and approve that MDOT IGA, and it will probably have that meeting like at 4:35, if everybody can come together fast enough, because the timing is so critical that we don't want to lose days. So the day we have it, you guys be made aware, and if it's 24 hours or 48 hours for public notice, we have to put out, whatever that is, it'll be fast.
You, you mentioned bonding for the local roads, but what about for Ford Road? Will that be necessary? Do you foresee that being necessary?
Part of our agreement with the state right now is to borrow money from the state to pay for that at a lower interest rate than we would have to if we bonded it ourselves, so...
Okay.
They're working with us to structure the payment in that it's, our payment stream would be the 15% of our annual millage that we're collecting, so we're gonna back into that principal amount. We ask them to minimize the interest as much as possible, so they're not gonna charge us, you know, if we expend $1 million of our portion in April, and then another half million in May, they're not gonna piecemeal the interest on that, they're gonna roll it to whatever's incurred through their fiscal year of September 30th, and then start charging the interest at that point in time. So we're, we're working on that, that's part of the numbers that we've been crunching together, and once we get settled with that, I think that's probably the biggest piece that we're waiting on right now for the agreement, is to make sure they're comfortable and we're comfortable, so we're, we're pretty close on that.
Great.
The only thing that I'd add is, this is a very unique agreement. MDOT typically doesn't enter into agreements with entities that are not receiving public Act 51 road money. So the leverage that MDOT has over those communities is, if you don't fulfill an agreement with MDOT, then they can withhold your Act 51 payment. They don't have that leverage with us, and that, I think, has been kind of the, the major struggle that MDOT has had with the nature of this, what will be very unique agreement, and also the largest agreement that MDOT has ever entered into with a non-public Act 51 entity in the state of Michigan, so, you know, they're treading, they're treading carefully. We too want to be careful, because, you know, it's our money, we want to make sure that everything is being done in the best interest of Canton Township.
And I just have two more quick questions. One is, the major county roads, is intersection widening something that could be included at some point?
It was in our 80-pound suitcase, so we've talked a little bit about it. Our anticipation is, early on, probably no. Long-term, it's definitely kind of something that should, should be considered.
And when will you know the 2020 major county roads? When would you target to know what those are?
We'd really like to get the answer from Wayne County in April or May of this, this coming year.
Of what they're gonna do?
What they're gonna do, so that we can kind of figure out our program, so that we can get the design, you know, well in hand come, you know, August, September, October, so that, again, we're bidding in early 2020.
Little, little inside baseball for incoming Commissioner-elect, some of the county staff has not been real forthcoming with what their plans are, a little shy at sharing data with us, so that will be a topic of conversation between myself and Warren Evans, County Executive Warren Evans, next week specifically, because if we're gonna be partners for the next 20 years, the game's gotta change from what, what's been happening recently. Summer?
A number of my questions have already been asked, but I just want to clarify for the local road program, if a homeowners association or a group of homeowners are interested in a project, will the township or will the consultants work with them to determine what the cost would be, so they can determine if they have enough money to enter in the letter of intent for the match?
Yeah, I think the, the idea is, they give us kind of a conceptual idea of what they want to do and how much money they might be able to afford, that would be in the design of the form that we, we come up with, and then we would, we would meet with them, unlike the county road initiative program where we had multiple meetings with the association, there would be what I would just kind of broadly define as a lot of hand-holding, we're not gonna have the luxury of really doing that in, in this project moving forward, but we would commit to doing at least one meeting with the homeowners associations to kind of get everybody on, on the same page. But, yeah, that's some, some of the thoughts that we've had for the program.
Thank you.
Michael? Yeah? Can I ask one more question?
Please.
I know that, for a lot of people, the Ford Road component seemed like it was the largest portion of the millage, however, it only amounts for 15%, and it is temporary, right? So we have capped how much we will contribute to this project. Is, has there been discussion with the internal working group about what will happen to that remaining 15% or 820 some odd thousand dollars, $826,000, once we have retired the debt to MDOT? Would we allocate that to local roads, to primary roads? Would we, would we split it in half? Would we go after Michigan Avenue, maybe, and spend it on that? I mean, what's the thought process? I know we're talking probably seven years out, or something along those lines, eight, nine years in?
If the right-of-way acquisition, which is really the unknown piece at this point in time, comes in at the full $10 million, our, that money will be 100% spent. There might be a couple hundred thousand dollars at the end of the project remaining, but there's not gonna be a lot of money remaining. However, if the right-of-way acquisition comes in significantly less, there's gonna be a lot of extra money left, so it really, you know, it's really dependent on, we won't know where that ends up until probably year two or three. Year two is when we're gonna start acquiring the property, and year three is probably when we'll wrap it up, so we're not gonna count our chickens until before they hatch, so we'll, that internal working group will have to make a decision if it comes in, hopefully it does come in less.
Great.
Yeah, thanks. One quick question, so a number of homeowners have also asked about, when's Lily Road Bridge going to get done, because it's a road, and I, I've told them that it's separate, so...
June 2019 is the last commitment from Wayne County, June 2019. Until, well, I'm gonna stop there, June 2019. Any additional comments, questions? Okay. Guys, that's really not bad. Thank you, public and staff and everybody, to get that much covered in an hour and a half, we did an amazing job, so thank you, everybody. A call for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Court.
Those in favor to adjourn the special study session, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Should we segue right into the board meeting, or do we need a break? I'm ready to keep going if everybody, let's keep going. We'll give an opportunity for the public who wants to clear to clear, and those who would like to stay, you're more than welcome.
Sergeant. Sergeant, is it? Thank you. I saw her. Yes, but I don't remember.
Yes, but I don't remember.
Could I ask Clerk Segrist to call the roll?
Trustee Anthony.
Present.
Trustee Foster.
Good evening.
Trustee Graham Hudek. Let the record reflect that Clerk Segrist is in attendance. Treasurer Slavens.
Good evening.
Trustee Snyderman.
I'm here.
And Supervisor Williams.
Hello. Call for a motion to approve the agenda with one amendment, and that is to drop item G4.
So moved.
Second.
Those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Carries. Aye, also. Thank you. We have, first up tonight, a special recognition, public safety promotion recognition of, oh, thank you very much, Treasurer Slavens. Call for a motion.
Mr. Supervisor, I make a motion that we pay the bills.
Second.
Those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Very good. Thank you, Treasurer Slavens, for slowing me down. Pay the bills.
Minutes?
Yes, we have one set of minutes for approval dated November 13, 2018. Could I have a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Those in favor of approve the minutes of November 13, 2018 meeting, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Is there anybody in the audience tonight that would like to make non-agenda item comments? Anybody like to make comments for an item that's not on the agenda at this time? Okay, seeing none. We would like to have a special recognition of Police Sergeant Adam Schulman. Adam, could you please join us at the podium here? Clerk Segrist, join me. He likes taking a lot of pictures. Right. Adam Schulman, am I saying that properly, sir?
Yes.
Okay. Is being recognized tonight for his promotion to the rank of Sergeant with the Canton Police Department. Adam was hired as a Canton Police Officer in April 2007. In his new position, Sergeant Schulman will serve as a platoon supervisor, providing leadership, training, and mentoring to the road patrol officers assigned on his shift. He will also be responsible for administrative assignments and special projects under the leadership of his designated shift commander. Adam is joined here tonight by his wife, Ally, twin boys Cameron and Connor. Hey, boys. Hello. And additional family and extended family members. Congratulations, sir. I present this badge to you.
Thank you.
And then Clerk Segrist is going to swear an oath.
Please raise your right hand. And repeat after me. I, Adam Schulman, solemnly swear.
I, Adam Schulman, solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
A police sergeant with Charter Township of Canton.
A police sergeant with the Charter Township.
Further, I swear upon my honor.
Further, I swear upon my honor.
To never betray my badge.
To never betray my badge.
My integrity.
My integrity.
My character.
My character.
For the public trust.
For the public trust.
I will always have the courage.
I will always have the courage.
To hold myself and others accountable.
To hold myself and others accountable.
For our actions of holding the community high.
For our actions of holding the community high.
Congratulations, John.
Would you like to say anything? Is there no comments tonight?
Can I get you to sign this?
Okay.
It's done.
It's a spare. Okay, but we do need signatures?
Double.
We'll let the clerk take care of the official.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Go ahead and just sign off for that one's going to be your copy, you know, that frame. All right.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right.
I'd like to call for a motion to formally read into the record our recognition of Police Sergeant Adam Schulman.
So moved.
Those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, guys. Okay, now, we're going to segue into a public hearing and adoption of the fiscal year 2019 budget. So, the first action is a call for a motion to open a public hearing.
Mr. Supervisor, I move that we open the public hearing on the adoption of the fiscal year 2019 budget at 7:37 PM.
Support.
Summer. Those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, and, let's see, do I turn it over to Director Trumbull? Going to lead us through this portion?
Sure. The budget we are asking the board to adopt is the budget that we discussed a year ago, and then the changes to that we discussed a couple weeks ago at the study session for 2019. I wasn't going to go into any specifics, except there were a couple changes that, as a result of that meeting, that we had just found out at that meeting, that our CDVG funds, we're going to pay for some improvements at the Human Services Center. So, we increased the CDVG budget by $50,000 to account for that, and we decreased the Community Improvement Fund budget by $50,000 from what we had, the changes we had previously discussed at that study session. Otherwise, the changes that we discussed were all what we are asking the board to adopt tonight. Other than that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Board questions or comments, because this is all material we've seen before previously. Okay. Are there any public comments? Okay, very good. Do we close the public hearing first, and then, okay, call for a motion to close the public hearing?
Mr. Supervisor, I move that we close the public hearing at 7:39.
Second.
Those in favor of the motion to close as presented, state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, so then we now, formal motion?
Supervisor, I move that the board adopt the following resolution. Whereas, Act 359 of 1947, the Charter Township Act, requires that the annual budget be adopted by resolution. And whereas the pursuant to MCLA 141.412 and 1413, notice of a public hearing on the proposed 2019 budget was published in a newspaper of general circulation on November 15, 2018, and a public hearing on the proposed budget was held on November 27, 2018. Now, therefore, be it resolved that estimated total revenues and expenditures for the 2019 fiscal year are hereby appropriated on a fund-level basis. Totals by fund are as follows. Be it further resolved that the Township Supervisor has the authority to approve budget adjustments between departments based upon recommendation by the appropriate department director and the finance and budget director in accordance with adopted policies. Be it further resolved that the Charter Township of Canton Board adopts the 2019 budget for the various funds on a fund level. Township officials responsible for the expenditures authorized in the budget may expend township funds up to, but not to exceed the total appropriation authorized for each fund. Be it further resolved that there shall not be any new positions created that shall result in an increase in employee headcount within a department or division without prior Township Board approval. Be it further resolved, the Township Supervisor has the authority to fill existing vacant and budgeted positions and reclassified positions based upon the recommendation by the appropriate department director and the finance and budget director. And be it further resolved that claims against the Township shall be approved by the Charter Township of Canton Board prior to being paid. The Township Clerk and Township Treasurer may authorize payment of certain claims prior to approval by the Township Board to avoid late penalties, service charges, and interest, for example, utilities and payroll, in accordance with approved salaries and hourly rates adopted by the Township Board. The Township Board shall receive a list of those claims paid prior to approval for approval at the next board meeting.
Support.
Okay, those approve, those who approve the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Have the consent calendar that we will ask Clerk Segrist to read in a single motion.
Mr. Supervisor, I move that the board approve the consent calendar as written. Item C1, consider 2019 meeting dates for the Commission for Culture, Arts, and Heritage, which are, item C2, consider approval of the 2019 Planning Commission meeting dates. Item C3, consider second reading of an ordinance to amend Chapter 18 by adding a new Article 8 entitled Marijuana Establishments. And item C4, consider second reading of an ordinance to amend Chapter 46, Article 7, Division 1 of the Canton Code of Ordinances, entitled Offenses and Miscellaneous Provisions to revise Section 46-506.
Second. Those in favor of the motion as presented, state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G1, which is... Consider Authorization of Transportation Services 2019 Budget Amendment.
This is the form of two motions. Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the following fiscal year 2019 budget amendment to increase the expenditures and account number listed for social services, transportation, in the amount of $22,000.
Second. Summary, on May 22, 2018, the Canton Board of Trustees authorized a three-year agreement with auto renewal option to Nankin Transit Commission to become the service provider for Canton Mobility Transportation Program. Service levels and projected budgets were established utilizing data reported to Canton's previous service provider. After several months of operation, Nankin has had, been able to increase ridership by 30%. By having a more efficient service network, this increase in ridership has led to an increase in demand and additional need for a full-time driver to accommodate our residents. Nankin is proposing additional driver at a total cost of $50,000 to be split amongst the five communities in the program. Canton's portion is 50% due to the level of percentage ridership, or 25% as this driver will be stationed in Canton. Other communities have already approved paying their portion of the cost. This will be an increase in the proposed 2019 budget, but still significantly lower than our previous provider. Are there any questions for Director Holmbrugger? Go ahead, Steve.
Well, I can't believe it's been six months already since we implemented this. Are there any cost recoveries for this at all from the increased ridership, or is that minimal?
That would be minimal.
Dollars per ride?
And they keep that, so that's already kind of in...
Oh, that's theirs.
In the agreement, correct. That helps offset our costs.
And do you see it growing even more? Are we going to get hit with another driver at some point?
I don't anticipate any immediate growth here. I think what this is, is really a reflection of their, Nankin Transit, keeping all of our current drivers in Canton Township, whereas before, they were servicing a larger area, were able to accommodate more calls. And what's happening is, Nankin has actually pulled some of their, one of their drivers from other communities to help service Canton because of the volume of calls. And that's where they want to get that driver back to where they need to be to be able to fully service Canton. And everything, the number of drivers that they hired and the budget that they presented and was initially in their initial contract was set based on the numbers that we got from our previous provider. So, that's kind of, I think this is an initial growing pain of learning the new routes for them and kind of our residents taking advantage of having a better service network available to them.
Okay, thank you.
So, are we going to continue to evaluate every six months, then, like we did this time? Basically, see if it's increased even more between now and six months from now?
We meet with Nankin, and the entire committee meets on a bimonthly basis, and we look at ridership and any other issues that may be coming up, and budgets, and those sorts of things. So, we're constantly evaluating those things.
Have you evaluated if any of the riders are, if we've increased, well, we didn't have it before, any ridership to the smart bus systems at all? Have you seen that happen? Or is it mostly?
I would have to check on that. I don't have that information right now.
That'd be interesting, because that's kind of a new service that we offered.
Right.
So, I wonder if we're taking advantage of it.
Yeah, I can find that out and follow up with the board on that. Absolutely.
Then, from a strategic perspective, we, there's riders coming out of the senior facilities, right?
Correct.
Pick up, okay, there as well. And we're going to have additional facilities coming to the community, plus Canton Township is continuing to grow older. So, ridership's just going to keep growing, I see, in the future.
There could be increased demand in the future, yes. But, this is still, even with this, an additional $25,000 that it'll cost the Township, it'll still, I think it's a savings of about $45,000 below what we were paying previously. So, there's still a savings with that.
Just took the words out of my mouth. I was going to say, we saw a 30% increase in ridership, and instead of a $70,000 in savings over the last year, we'll see a $45,000 in savings. But regardless, we still got more people riding for less money, so that's good in my book.
And Director Trumbull wants me to point out that this is the fastest budget amendment to an approved budget in the history of Township, I believe.
One thing with this new seniors coming in that you did state, Pat, we are asking some of the centers as they come in, if they provide their own transportation. Luckily, a lot of them are saying yes. So, hopefully, that'll help.
Most of the centers do provide transportation for their residents. There are a handful of the older ones that do not. Canton Place is one of our frequent places that we do a lot of trips for. They don't provide transportation, but most of the others do, so we don't have to service those centers nearly as often. Occasionally, we do, still.
Those in favor of the first motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Second motion.
Mr. Supervisor, I further move to amend a previously authorized three-year agreement with an auto renew option to the Nankin Transit Commission. The amount of the contract with the Nankin Transit Commission is not to exceed the annual amount of $471,027 in year one, $412,395 in year two, and $423,348 in year three of the contract.
Support.
Those in favor of the second motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G2, consider approval of minor revisions to the building and inspection services fee.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the revisions to the building and inspection services fee schedule, and for that change to take effect on January 1, 2019.
Support.
The current BIS municipal services fee schedule was adopted in 2015. Building Inspection Services is ongoing reviews of its processes, including time spent in the field. The building officials feel that there's a need to update to clarify some of the permit fees to better reflect the time now being spent inspecting those permits. Since permit fees are approved by resolution of the board, these revisions must be approved in advance of 2019, and there is a schedule that has been placed at your, that shows where those changes are occurring, highlighted in yellow.
Yeah, it's a substitute to what Page 90 in the board packet was, where we had the highlighted changes. On the weekend, I caught a typo on the line item under building permit fees. It should be reading each 1,000 or part thereof over 5K, not over 3K, which is the one that's in the packet. So, this is a revision that will probably more significantly affect small permits and not so significantly affect big permits. So, a deck, it'll reduce the cost of a deck. So a deck, it'll reduce the cost of a deck permit by 20 bucks, by my math. It'll reduce the cost of an addition valued at $100,000 by 20 bucks. So really kind of benefits the smaller permits and actually reflects more the true cost of what it costs to inspect those projects. And then there's a couple other revisions below.
Board questions? Seeing none, those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, item G3. Consider approval and adoption of the 2018 Water Distribution System Master Plan.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve and adopt the 2018 Water Distribution System Master Plan as prepared by OHM in August 2018.
Support.
Michigan Safe Water Drinking Act, Public Act 399, requires communities perform master plan, aka reliability studies of the drinking water system every five years. The purpose of the water master plan is to develop a comprehensive model which determines existing and future water distribution system capabilities, identify any system infrastructure deficiencies, and assist in determining future capital improvements. While MDEQ requires the document be updated every five years due to completion of the water storage facility, Canton Township was granted an extension by MDOT... Or MDEQ requiring completion 2018. Staff is requesting the board approve the recommendation and adopt the plan. And Tim, what are you sharing with us here?
This is... Yeah, I just wanted to highlight this one page. It's a pretty long report, not super technical, but it lays out the basis for the improvements that are required to the system. So after reviewing the system, OHM is recommending that over the next five years, we only have eight projects that need to be done on the water system. This is good news financially for the board and for the ratepayers. Means the system's in good condition, and very little improvements are required to meet the five-year plan. So that's the 3.3 million in capital that's listed here, about two-thirds of the way down. That's easily absorbed within the rates. And then over the next 15 years, which shows you the 20-year planning horizon, there's only an additional $1 million worth of projects. So we have skinnied down the number of capital projects required in the system from the previous master plan by about $6 million. So it's good news for the township, and this will satisfy what we need to plan for the capital and also satisfy the DEQ's requirements.
Board questions or comments? Seeing none, those in favor of the mo... I'm sorry, Michael, please.
How often... So how often is the system inspected? Because I guess, I know a lot of municipal MSD directors and just municipal service people in general are concerned about our water infrastructure in general in southeast Michigan. And is that more... Does that kind of concur, or does that follow more with older communities, or...
Yeah, so inspection of the system is difficult on water because it's a pressurized system. You can't kind of physically go in and look at it very easy because it's always in use. It's always full of water and pumping. But OHM had made some recommendations about some non-destructive ways that we can build into our maintenance budget, some inspection schedules. And we'll continue to do that over the next many years. But based on what they know of the condition today, which is what this report represents, there's only these roughly $4.3 million worth of projects over the next 20 years.
Those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, item G5. Consider approval of Public Safety Department's five-year strategic plan.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the Public Safety Department's five-year strategic plan, 2019 through 2023, as previously presented to the Canton Township Board of Trustees.
Support. Background, Public Safety's five-year strategic plan was created with input from outside panel of residents and community members, along with public safety leadership and employees. The plan identifies the needs of the department during the next five years and objectives to meet those needs. It was distributed to the board hot off the press today, yesterday? Okay, yesterday, so I don't know if everybody... Do the plan. It's very thorough, very detailed, and that will also help us with our discussions on Saturday as well. So it's good information to be looking at. Are there any board comments or questions for Director Meyer or our chiefs? Yes, Steve?
Oh, I... I was on the panel, and we got it presented to us in August. Have there been any major changes since August?
No, the only... Really, the only changes are the... What we presented. There is one slight change that we talked about during the budget process with the supervisor. The original plan called for four additional police officers in 2019. The grant for our SOMET position was extended, so the supervisor has authorized us to add a fifth position, which will pay for completely overtime and everything through that grant. Good news.
Mr. Supervisor, if I may, I just wanna thank the board for your support and leadership throughout this process. It was a... It was a long process for the Public Safety Department to get through. My staff did a lot of work, so I wanna thank them, my deputy directors, deputy chiefs. Denise, my secretary, and Barb Crusoe, administrative assistant, who couldn't be here, did really all the... A lot of the heavy lifting, created what turned out to be a comprehensive plan and an excellent document that not only is it a good plan, but it also, by them doing the bulk of the work, saved the township a considerable amount of money versus contracting this out to an outside company. So really proud of the work that my team did on this plan.
Congratulations, and thank you for doing that. And it gives us good insight to where we need to add the next couple of years in terms of what we're gonna be talking about strategically in future budgets. So it's very useful, and your timing could not be better. Further comments? Those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. That concludes our formal business this evening. Are there any board comments in closing?
We had a good race. Are we waiting till we have to be closed, or...
Turkey trot?
Turkey trot, right?
We had over 1,400 runners for the turkey trot on Thursday, so very...
Records in terms of the funds raised and...
For $20,000 for the epilepsy foundation.
Who was it, Carter? I mean, his... We saw him, you know, everybody took off, and then we saw the police. I mean, he was way ahead of everybody, so it was a really good race, that young man. Really good race.
Marshall, the parade marshal? Catholic Central, young man from Catholic Central.
Yeah, Carter, he did it in 1555. 16 years old. And then, of course, Reagan came in '19. That was the first woman that came in. Yeah.
That breakfast with Santa is sold out again, which is always...
Yep, and then tree lighting.
Tree lighting December.
Week from tomorrow.
Lot of fun stuff coming at us. And then Saturday is our strategic planning session with Lou Bender, so... Action-packed week. All right. Seeing no other comments, call for a motion to close?
So moved.
Support.
In favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you.